We are at one o'clock. I don't have a gavel, but we'll go ahead and open the March 27th, 2023 Agenda Review. But today, actually, we'll start with the Budget Work Session at this time. And there we go. Bells are in. Ms. Bowie, would you call the roll, please?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildeboer.
Present.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Josie Bornhart.
Here.
Stephanie Crable.
Here.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
I'm here, but it took me a long time to park off. I picked over too far.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Okay, we are mostly here, anyway. Our next order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
I have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass is seven zero. Before we do the invocation, I would like to take just a moment. Unfortunately, in the recent days, we've had two tragic losses. A Laney High School student who was a football player and a wonderful young man was taken from us on March 10. We will be keeping this young man's family in our thoughts and our prayers during this very difficult time. Rest in peace, DJ McClay. Then yesterday, we heard that Deb Hayes, a wonderful leader, county commissioner, and friend, had passed away. We will pray for her family during this challenging time. Rest in peace, Deb Hayes. Please join me for a moment of silence as we remember these two wonderful people. If you would stand. Thank you. May be seated. I was going to open it up to the board if anyone would like to make Sir? Oh, if anyone would like to make any comments about Deb or about DJ?
The, um, I, I attended the fundraiser that they had, and I sent a picture to the, and then so did Laney High School. But it was just very overwhelming, the amount of support that was there. And every one of our programs had students and faculty. So that was really touching, you know, to see that. So let me just gather my thoughts for a moment. And, you know, Deb, you know, she was almost like our arch-nemesis in the budgeting process. But her heart was always in the right place. And, um, you know, we've been friends for a number of years and just doing a lot of community work together. And so it was a, it was a shock. And it's going to be tough to, you know, to get along without her because her, her hands were in just so many things. And so the person that they get to fill in her role, you know, for the next year and a half is going to have some huge, huge shoes and flip-flops to fill. So we'll miss you, Deb.
Absolutely. Anyone else like to? If not, we will carry on with our Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Bradford, would you lead that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Rabbi Bender of the Benet Israel Congregation will be leading our invocation.
My name is Rabbi Chaya Bender. It's my honor to be addressing the Board of Education in prayerful invocation the week before the holiday of Passover. Passover is the timeless festival of freedom, from the Israelites in Egypt all the way forward to the many modern miracles in our lives today. About Passover, Rabbi Jonathan Sacks once said, quote, "The message of Passover remains as powerful as ever. Freedom is not won on the battlefield, but in the classroom and in the home. Teach your children the history. You want them never to lose it," end quote. During the Seder, we Jews say in every generation, every person is obligated to see oneself as if they fled Egypt. In that way, may we help every child to realize that they all have a unique journey, a unique Exodus to take for themselves. To help them know that freedom is that journey to their fully realized potential. May we all be their Moses to help assist them along their unique paths.
Thank you. At this point, we'll turn it over to Ms. Sut, and I think she's going to lead us through today.
Everyone has a binder. And if you left your binders with me, I inserted the blue pages for you. If you kept your binder, I gave you the handout, which we made. So hopefully, everyone has that. And we'll start with the same thing we started with, with the Finance Committee meeting, just an overview of the current budget. And this is a document that you've seen many times before. Our current budget. And at the top of the document, we like to list by funds, so our different funding sources. So our total funding, $422 million, as you see on the screen there. And this is in your binder behind the Operations tab. Sorry about that. So you should, Operating Budgets tab, I believe is the name of the tab. And it should be your first document behind the tab. And if you'd like me to take the binders back up after, if you want to take notes in the binder, if you write your name on the front, then I'll know who to give it back to. I'll be glad to do that. In the middle of the page, we're listing our budget by different services that are provided through the budget. So the top shows the different funding sources. The middle of the page shows the different services. So you can see here that salaries and benefits make up about 73% of our total budget. And then the last chart on the page shows our local funding. So this is our local current expense, $102 million, as you can see here. And that makes up about 70% of this budget. If you include the charter school payments that were required by state law to make, that's about 75% of the budget. The remaining 25% is made up of the purchased services, supplies, materials, and equipment, as you can see here. So this is our starting point for the budget process. So we'll go through this afternoon, changes to the budget. So this is the current budget we have in place, and through our budget process, the budget development, we go through adjustments, changes that we want to make to this budget as we're planning for next year. The next item on the agenda is the, to talk about our legal services. So the finance, during our Finance Committee meeting, that committee asked that I bring back information related to legal services. So if you skip the green pages in your binder, and you'll see a yellow page. The yellow page is five years of legal services. Now, it might be a little, um, I, I just want to provide some clarification. You will see some things in the first three years, even though it's coded to our legal services contracted code that we use now. Because we had on-staff attorney and a paralegal on-staff, you'll see some things there that we currently don't pay for. Currently, we're just paying for attorney fee contracts. But I have that broken out by year. The Finance Committee asked that I also break out by the different vendors that we use, so I've provided that for you. I want to just pause in case there were any questions, because that did come as a question from the Finance Committee. I didn't know if there was any discussion around this.
I did, and I can, I have the marrying. Oh, but I, I had a couple of days off last week. So if y'all want to write in the binder, Jason sent us an email, and he told us that in 2019, we had two legal cases. 2019, excuse me, 2019, we had John Doe one through 14 versus Board of Education. And then 2020, we had Jane Doe one and two versus Board of Education. That was when it was filed, was 2020. So if you could compare those to your, to the, to the amounts, to me, it seemed to help. And then 21 was really active, so there were five of them. The first one in 2021 was Jane Doe one and two versus BOE became active. Remember, it was filed the year before. Jane Doe three versus Board of Education. Jane Doe one, two, and three, the cases were consolidated. And 2021, Oglesby v. Johnson and the Board of Education. And 2021, BOE versus Netherlands Insurance Company. Then 2022, Smith versus Board of Education filed. 2023, Smith versus Board of Education served. He says note, partial, just eight of 12 months, when he gave this to me. And another note, the fiscal here runs through June, the end of June. So those help in terms of looking at this, in my opinion.
Ms. Crable?
So I also thought, I've now listened to the Finance Committee, and I thought that it was also made clear that the legal fees for the John Does and the Jane Does, we're not paying for. That Liberty Mutual is paying for that, so that is not in our budget. Is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
If it's covered through insurance, the insurance company pays for the term associated with that.
So a lot of what, you know, Ms. Bradford mentioned there, I think, is not relevant to these legal fees. But, you know, I just wanted to bring that up for us to consider. And then I thought I also heard in that meeting that we were going to break down what, to show that Farrington Smith, we use them in so many other ways than just legal, general counsel. So is, is that reflected in here at all, or?
It is not. I, I thought during the Finance Committee meeting, we went back and determined that just by vendor was going to be sufficient. Because in the invoices, we would have to look at each invoice to determine, and then break out manually the, each invoice into different categories, because it's not billed that way. It's all billed together.
Okay, that's fine. I was just, then I'm, I must have misunderstood. Okay.
Clarification on Ms. Crable's first question.
Mr. McManus? I was just going to ask, maybe Dr. Faust could give us an estimate? I know it would be an estimate with everybody in the central office, et cetera, schools. Maybe how many times they're contacted, be it one minute or end up months? Just a gander.
So it could be, their invoice could be anywhere from 15 to 30 pages. That's, I mean, because it's, again, there are eight departments. And in there, it depends, it could be safety, it could be, of course, I can go down, it could be open records request. It could be, you know, something with curriculum, it could literally be HR, technology, student support. When we are, a couple of months ago, we were having to do a lot of work with, in our, one of our departments, and so it did consume a lot of hours.
Ms. Walker?
Ms. Bradford, did she have something to add? Because I didn't want to jump.
I was just going to get clarification. Insurance is covering legal, but are there calls to the attorney during a case that are in addition to the insurance that's covering legal? Do you know what I'm saying? In other words, we've got a law firm, and it's handling insurance, and they're billing it out there. But aren't there other calls coming in for clarification and so on?
There could be, yes.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, the chart plus here is where we are actually, were, or are in the process of suing our own insurance company, so. Yes, ma'am?
So I guess what, what we can't see here, and it's probably important to note, since Ms. Crable brought it up, was the fact that we don't know how much, how much in-house cost. That's not on here. So it might be comparable, I'm not sure. That would probably also get put in perspective.
So what I shared with Ashley, so for instance, we would then take the cost of, like, an attorney and a paralegal, and you put those two together. Then, so what happens on our side monthly? It runs anywhere from 20 to 30 K a month, depending on how active it is. And, but it has been low, as low as an invoice has been as low as, I think, 17, since I've been here.
Yeah, well, the only reason I made that point is because, you know, if we look at the first couple of years, you know, it jumps after we get rid of in-house counsel, and that's why I was just saying, there's, there's that to consider as well. It looks like it's going from nothing to like, you know.
And there was a paralegal, too, so it was really two positions.
Yeah, and so that would include their benefits and their insurance and their salary, all that kind of stuff. Also, too, to answer Ms. Bradford's question, the, if we do, and Jason can jump in and correct here, but when we have those kind of questions, he always calls Deborah and, and/or Stephen Rousen to give us updates on that. Because he did not give us updates, because that is a separate matter. So we don't really use Jason in his, in his capacity as general counsel to advise us on this case. We use Stephen, Mr. Rousen, and Ms. Tagg. Is that right, Jason?
Yes, that's right. Board members, I'm on the call, happy to answer questions. When a, when a question relates to, you know, active litigation that's covered by insurance, it's billed to a separate file that goes straight to the insurance company. So even when, for example, Mr. Rousen is giving the board an update enclosed on a litigation matter, that would also be billed to the insurance file. So I believe what's shown here would be legal fees for other matters. And it could be, you know, every, every June, I think, at least since our firm has been there, we've given a update on legal services that breaks it down into big buckets, like public records requests, you know, bond and DWI forfeitures, you know, general legal advice, student, special ed matters, you know, contracts, personnel. Those are the big buckets that make up the annual fees, at least for Farrington Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other discussion of the, the legal services? If not, Ms. Sut?
Okay, so we'll proceed. If you'll flip back to your green pages, that were in front of the yellow sheet that we're on now. This is a listing for our operation expenses that we talked about, that's $102 million. These are the changes that we're recommending through this budget cycle. And what I would like to do is go through each section and give maybe a pause for any conversation that needs to happen. I'll start with the changes in revenue. So this is page one, your first green sheet in your binder.
The title is 23, 24?
Budget planning. So on this first sheet, in the revenue section, you see here an increase for the county appropriation. And this increase is based on the county funding 27,500 students. That includes our charter schools. When they provide funding for us, they include them in that number. Our New Henry County School students that we've got included here is actual, well, actually, let me go back. The 27,500 is actually an increase compared to last year of 24,532. So that's how we came up with that increase in the county appropriation, assuming that they'll continue to fund the per pupil at 3,434, as they did in the previous two years. So that increase is about $3 million, as you see here on the sheet. We would also recommend decreasing our fund balance appropriation by $4 million. As we have talked about previously, there was a one-time fund balance appropriation for the $4 million to fund the one-time money that went away, that we were receiving from DPI due to decline enrollment after the pandemic, hoping the students would come back, and that didn't happen. So that's, since we're no longer receiving that funding, we felt like that was too quick of a turnaround for this current year. So we went ahead and did appropriation for that $4 million, but would like to take that out of the budget going forward into next year.
So what would that leave our fund balance at?
So our fund balance, I think I actually have some information on that. If we were to spend the fund balance, this year, we actually appropriated 8 million of fund balance. That includes this 4 million we're referring to. If we spend all of that 8 million, and we are on target to do that, and we budget 4 million of appropriation going into next year, hoping that we won't spend that 4 million, at the end of next year, so June 2024, we would have a total fund balance of about 10 million. Of that 10 million, when you back out, and, and this is an estimate of where we're going to have, as far as the things that I'll have to have in a I'll have to, I don't have access to all the fund balance, because general statute requires me to not touch things related to inventory reserves, receivables that haven't come in yet. And so what we would actually be able to appropriate would be around $3 million at the end of 2024 fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
So the next line is our state appropriation increase. This appropriation estimate is based on 25,085 students. That was this year, and that's what the state funded this year. Next year, the projected student enrollment is going to be 25,230. And so that increase of about 145 students is what we're anticipating. And so we've calculated the revenue change according to that increase in student enrollment. This estimate also Yes. I've got a little bit more related to state. We also, in addition to increasing student enrollment, I've also assumed that the state's going to give a 4% raise, so that, we don't have a state budget, so this is just an estimate on my part. But we've built into this budget a 4% raise, and also increases of about 5% for retirement and for health insurance. And so that is also included in that state appropriation increase. Yes.
Well, I'm curious, and I probably know the answer to this, but do, if our enrollment's higher, does the state ever reimburse for that? They do? They do it like maybe half the year?
So, no, so in the first 20 days, we do a 20-day head count, and so that's when we settle up. And anything that comes after that 20th day, it's
Okay, so yeah, beyond 20 days, no.
And the other part, which is under the appropriation, where Ashley gave the 4% increase, so of course, this is our estimate. In the event that the General Assembly comes back with something higher, so of course, they do the biannual budget, where it's, they can do a budget for two years. In the current state, the governor is recommending 16%, so it'll be 10%. 10% of a budget. So you look at your money, and you'll see a huge decrease of what would have to happen. We would be squirming a little bit. And we'll figure it out. But, so we do a calculation of where it has been over the couple of years, but it could come back higher as the increase, and if it comes back with the raise being higher, then we come back and let you know.
Ms. Barnhill?
You're saying the squirming part, because our local funded positions, we would have to have that 10%? Okay, okay, just for clarification. So we, we would be getting more money from the state, but because we have locally funded positions to treat fairly for staff? Okay.
And that's also true for federal, and our federal employees, we're not necessarily going to get an increase with our federal funding based on the state raise.
Okay.
I do have another question. This is related to this top part here, and maybe Dr. Faust or Ashley can answer this. The recommended amount to keep in the fund balance, that's why obviously we're putting more money back in. Is there a recommended amount? Is that a percentage of our budget, perhaps?
So the commissioners have asked us to keep it at 10.
10, okay.
But we do have a recommended, but we will keep it at 10.
Yeah, they don't match, we didn't found out last year, the recommended versus what they said.
Any other questions? No, Ms. Sut?
Okay. The next section is salary and benefits, and we've actually discussed that already in the revenue, where we are building this budget based on the 4% increase and increase in benefits. So here, you see the total cost for all of our employees here. The next section talks about, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the, the salaries and benefits, we, we've looked at, at some point, maybe it was last year, I can't remember if we done it sooner, the, the breakdown of what we pay in each, like, pay level, and, not pay level, but class, whatever they're, whatever. Yes, so will we ever get a chance to look at that again?
Yes, we can bring that up, but the, this budget is bringing everyone up 4%. Last year was a little different, because we had the higher of the $15 or whatever the percent. I think it's 2.5%, is what we budgeted, and the state ended up doing around 4%, a little bit over. But in this case, it's not going to be, it's going to be really an across-the-board 4% for everyone, but we can, we certainly bring those tables back.
Oh, no, and, and that's not what the, I'm, I'm good on that part. I was just looking at, I'll just use my, my one that I bring up every time. You know, have we looked at what we're doing with our registrars at the four traditional high schools?
We have talked with them, we're talking about whether we need to look at a reclassification.
That's, that's what I meant, yes, okay, so, so that is something that we are going to, we are continuing to look at?
We'll look at it. Well, and when you think about it, a step increase moves a person down a scale. An adjustment like this, that actually moves the entire scale up.
Right, yes, and, yes, that's what, I'm, I'm good with all that. I was just, that specific reclassification is what I had a question about. Okay, thank you.
So we're ready to move on to the next section. So the next section is mandatory increases. And the first item I have listed here for us is related to the charter schools. And so just as our enrollment numbers go up, charter school enrollment numbers are projected to go up as well. So this is the payment that we'll make to our charter schools. Now, please keep in mind that the county funds this. So the county, along with our appropriation, gives us the appropriation for the charter schools, and then we're responsible for making that payment to them every month, based on their enrollment.
That looks like, in the math, if I'm doing it right, is that like additional 99 students?
Yeah.
Because that's the local divided by the
Yeah, it's, it's actually a little bit, it's more than It's actually a little bit, it's more than that. I'm trying to see if I had that in my notes here. So our projected number's 25,230, and the county is gonna fund 27,500, so that difference is charter schools.
Okay.
Ms. McManus?
I may have asked this, if I did, I apologize if I don't remember. When you write checks for the charter school, does that go to the individual? Is it made out to the school or to the individuals?
To the school, the charter school.
Okay. So are those in county as a rule or out of county?
Only our county, yes.
Only our county? They have to live in our county?
It's students, yes.
But can't they go to a school outside our county if they're domiciled in our county?
They have to be students that would come to New Hanover County schools.
Right, they're domiciled in New Hanover County.
Yeah, the charter school could be outside of New Hanover County.
Yeah.
But the student lives within New Hanover County.
Can you repeat those numbers? 27,500?
Yep, 25,230. 25,260 is our student projection number, and the county's, the request to the county's gonna be for 27,500 students with the difference being charter schools.
Any other disque?
It's 2240. That's the difference.
Any other questions? If not, please carry on.
We also have some mandatory increases related to insurance rates that we're anticipating. We actually had some increases this year that we didn't quite cover, and I, at the last board meeting, I brought back a fund balance appropriation to help cover those expenses through the rest of the year. So this increase covers the rate increases for this year and what's anticipated for next year. The next line is our principal fellows program. So we currently participate in a principal fellows program, and this is gonna add a new, would you, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure.
I saw you lean up.
Lean it in, yeah.
We are working with UNC Chapel Hill with their principal fellows program. We have two candidates who are in their second year of this program. The state will provide a minimum of the AP salary to those people to be actual APs for the second year of the program. This is our way of matching to make sure they don't lose any salary, because some of them may be over what that salary would be, and then to match their retirement so they don't lose a year by doing a part of the program. But they will be fully licensed and ready to roll a year from now at this time.
So they're still our employees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next item is an increase in our memorandum of understanding or memorandum agreement with UNCW related to Isaac Pear High School. So we have a slight increase there that we wanted to adjust the budget for to be able to cover that. So that's just to continue the same program that we've, we've had. And then the last item in that section is related to utility increases. And once again, I brought back a fund balance appropriation to the last board meeting because our utilities budget was a little short for this year. So this is to shore that up going into next year, and then also to cover some rate increases that we're anticipating.
The, if the governor, I thought I heard that the governor was putting into his budget increases in pay for masters. Would that be something that we, if it passes, would that be something that we would have to include here?
The state would more than likely cover that increase, and we would pay for those individuals out of state funding.
Unless they're local, yeah.
Oh, unless they're, okay, gotcha.
So our budget, this is all local?
Right. Yeah, so the changes that we're talking about today are just related to our local budget, because our state and federal budget is pretty well set. And so these, those are the changes that we're anticipating, other than for the raises and benefits that we talked about. The state budget is pretty well set.
Okay.
Any questions? If not, thank you.
The next section is covering our local allotment formula changes. I'm not sure if it will be helpful or not, but behind your blue sheet of paper in your binder, there's three sheets that are white that are the allotment formulas. So these are our proposed allotment formulas going into the next year. And I'm gonna go through and just talk through some of the changes compared to last year. These may not be in the same order that they're on your green sheet, but I wanted to talk through those with you.
So are we looking at the green sheet or are we looking at this?
Whichever is most helpful to you. So the green sheet's gonna have the changes, but if you want to see what the formula is, that's gonna be on the white sheet. So which, I'm not sure which is most helpful for you. Yes.
Who, is this mandated from somewhere, or is this us doing? Who's making these changes?
This is us. This is us looking at our local funding formulas and also looking at the revenue that we have available to us and making adjustments to better align with the revenue that we are expecting for next year. I know we have talked about before, you know, before the pandemic, we were at a little over 26,000 students, and now we're at a little over 25,000. And so we really were holding our formulas at the 25,000 student level and hoping, just like the state, that the students would come back. But since that didn't happen, we feel like now we really need to look at these formulas and, and really take a hard look at what we can afford to do going forward.
And Ashley, what do you mean when you say formulas?
So the state gives a formula for how many, if you have X amount of pupils, you get X amount of staff. And so what we did is we interpret that, and we create one for local.
Ms. Walker?
So just to clarify, because these are the white sheets you were talking about, that's the allotment formulas that we're talking about local, right now?
Yes.
Because some people are gonna maybe think we're talking about everything. Because on here, obviously, it talks about, you know, J.C. Rose, for example, you know, no AP. But that doesn't mean, does that mean they don't have one?
That, that means they do not have one. So these, these formulas that are on the white sheets, we are actually using funding, state funding and local funding to be able to fund these positions. And we'll go through, and I'm sure Dr. Barnes will have some things that he can add to the conversation as well.
Ms. McManus?
I'm just gonna come in. Ms. Bapper's question was, if it's still, I think it's the same, it's all about numbers, and the state allocates administrators, staffing, et cetera. And then the local makes the decision how they take those numbers and apply them.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnhart?
So am I reading this correctly? The low-performing schools, so there's 12 right now. If they're less than 320, they would be guaranteed an assistant principal or not?
We're working on these formulas a little bit as well. Right now, we have many of our schools that either receive an intern or some kind of additional support in regards to AP. But we are trying to come back down to a level that is anywhere close to what the state allocates assistant principals at.
And just, you know, to throw, not a monkey wrench in, but just some information. When we had the principal for the day, the other day, actually, Ms. Hayes and I were talking about the possibility of maybe them, meaning the county commissioners funding a small pot of money for each school, that they would be able to choose between, you know, an assistant principal or, because the school that I was at, you know, the lady needed roller skates, because she was just, had to be everywhere doing everything at the same time, and she didn't have an assistant principal. She did have an intern, but, so, anyway, hopefully, we can carry that on, and maybe, you know, the county commissioners will help us out with that.
This is a follow-up to that. So the way you guys, I think you explained it last time, Dr. Fausser, was that it depended on the enrollment in the school, whether they were, they had an AP or not?
So just to help, so in order to stabilize and balance the budget, so the state will give you, based on pupils, many of your students, they'll say, this is how many you get. Federal does the same thing. Federal is more of your special, special ed. There's some grants that are in there, AIG, that's all over in the federal side. The local allows you to have above and beyond. And so what happens is if you have above and beyond, that's great. So at 3434, we get about 91, a total of about 91 million, after all is said and done. However, when we say, okay, it's only gonna be, we have 700 positions in our above and beyond. 700 positions, so we have to fund that with that local funds, because we are going above and beyond. But we're, we funded those with the 26,000 kids. So it was fine, because we had the money to match it. The kids dropped, but we didn't level set for the adults. So now, what happens is governor, the General Assembly says, okay, we're gonna give a 10% increase. You don't have the money. I'll say you, we, you make the final decision. You don't have the money to give, well, we'd have to go into fund balance, we'd have to tap into fund balance. What is it per month to pay everyone?
Yes, about 8.5 million per month.
Per month? There's $10 million in fund balance. So what we have to do is say, okay, do an analysis of, okay, how many, and I get it, everyone will have a just reason as to why, because they're supposed to. Why I need this position, why I need that. But the question that we have to fall back on is what can we, as an organization, fund? And once all the dust is settled, and let's say we do get more students, then we can then say, okay, we give, we a lot more. But in this initial stage, you have to actually look and see, just like planning for your own budget. If you live off of your savings account, and say, technically, you shouldn't live off your savings account, don't be a financial planner now. You should only, you know, live within your means. When we are living with 26,000 kids, or we're saying that, we're living above our means. And so even having conversations with our commissioners, it's like, okay, you've gotta live within your means. We're supporting you, because when we first got here, when I first got here, they were funding us at about 2,800 per student. So that was in 2020. So they went from 2,800 to 3434. They gave us a significant increase.
Dropped enrollment.
And we have dropped enrollment, so they gave us an increase. So now, what do we have to do? So we have to be fiscally responsible. So I have to be fiscally responsible. I get it, I understand, I see that, you know, we cut, we cut. But if we look, you go back, and you'll see that we have some in our schools where it's a ratio of nine to one. What does that mean? The state isn't funding a nine-to-one ratio at all. Where does that position come from? Local. So what we, and then, so if you put two together, then you've got actually one classroom. So I don't want us to seem as though we're hard-hearted and that we don't care, but in order for us to help stabilize, because there'll be things that you'll want to do, but when we're pushing back, it's like, we can't do that. Because your budget, you, you, the board can't technically spend state dollars or federal dollars. You can only spend local dollars. So the money that you have access to, if you're wanting to do a program that you think that we should be doing, that has to come out of local funds. But if we have all of that money allocated and spent, well, allocated meaning accounted for, we, we don't have anything. So I get it, we do, we definitely want to be able to support. But what I was asking, and we went into this, is let's look and see, how far away are we from the state allotment? And then let's find out, can we bring it back into some? And then remember, we had these ESER dollars, and there were 100 and, I think, 100, I forget the, we can go back and look at last year's meeting, but I had a number, and we had to cut. And so these, what you're seeing this year is where we have to get it back into good shape. So we were able to live off of those funds from ESER with those positions, but ESER, we're, when June first hits, we have, we're in the last hoo-ha of ESER funding. It'll be finished in September of 2024, and it's all gone.
ESER 2 is the biggest one, right? Was ESER 2 the biggest?
Three, three is the biggest.
Mr. McManus?
That was our choice, if I remember, was cut or give a raise. And I know, when I said, I can't cut someone to give somebody else a raise at this point the way it was. Do the principals have a say, once they get their positions? And I should know this, but they all have a say for us. They can say, I opt for another principal rather than X, Y, or Z.
So they can swap out, exchange, as long as it's within. So of course, you know, classroom teachers, there are certain things they have to have. But in their funding, they can swap out and say, okay, I don't want a curriculum coach, I want this.
And last, Freeman's one of those that's got the nine, is the other is?
So there are some, so Freeman may be one, but there, some of our elementary schools are, have a small ratio. I couldn't, I mean, just naming them off, I'm not able to call them.
But to make up for this, clarification, we have MOUs to get more assistant principals, like internships, correct?
Right.
I'm looking at Dr. Fausser on there.
Yes, we have two.
Do we have, so I'm specifically with our, with our high priority schools or low performing, do we have enough internships to be able to have all of them covered? Or are we working towards that?
Well, it's, it's usually a blend. There's always attrition that happens every year naturally. Some go up to be a principal, some move to North Dakota, you know, there's always a little bit of a transition. Not there specifically, but you get my meaning. So you always wanna have a blend of internal and external candidates for, to really get the highest quality people in the positions. So generally, there's a blend of both. So we have not had specific trouble finding assistant principals at this point, and we feel like making sure that we keep a small enough pool kinda going with the best of the best really helps us, you know, update. We haven't had problems with that specifically.
To answer your question, do we have interns to go in, or do we do?
Does that all of our primary schools?
Not all of them need. I think, most of them have APs.
Okay.
They have to be in county interns? Can they come from other counties? Do they have to be in county?
They can, they, yes, they can come from outside the county if, they're gonna set that up with their university.
Ms. Walker?
I have a question. The extra funding, the title, or schools that get title on funding, do, can they, are they restricted on, can they get more positions with that funding?
They can, they can. They can, that's how, a lot of them are able to reduce class sizes.
And I think Dr. Faeser actually shared with us that that may not be the best use of that funding.
Yeah, I just wanna keep in mind, guys, think about, all we hear about is the people that, there are not enough people out there. So we can purchase positions, but doesn't mean we're gonna get quality people. And when you think about turning around a school or impacting a school, or any school, it's not just about a person walking the hall, it's about a quality, effective person walking the hall. And they're, they're just not out there falling off. Just because we create the position, sometimes it's not the best thing to do. And I can just speak from, you know, my experience, there were so many times that the position just sat there, you really just thought of different things to do with that money, and trying to make your teachers' lives better in the classroom was some of the things that they couldn't get maybe in a typical class, because the people were not there that would speak, you know, like I said, quality, effective people. So keep that in mind. We can create other positions we want.
And some of the hegemony research.
Oh, I thought you, you were talking about hegemony?
The Hattie.
Oh, you're talking about the collective efficacy? Oh, okay, sorry. How did I miss that? Okay. Maybe I was thinking that when you were talking. But collective efficacy, of course, is at the top. And that's where everybody in the building, again, that goes back to that, though, everybody in the building, again, believes that we can do this, is we all believe that we can do this, we believe the students can do this, and together, we build this sense of, we're gonna work together. You might, and a good example of it that you see sometimes, is let's say you're out, right? And I might actually take your kids or do something to make sure your kids don't lose instruction for that time that I know is of quality. It's like we see ourselves as a team, and I am supporting the entire school. It's like we see ourselves as a team, and I am supporting the entire school, not just my natural. It's the biggest factor in improving, um, schools regardless.
Any other questions? If not, Ms. Sutton?
Okay, I did want to go through and just tell, walk through some of these changes that you see here. The ISS coordinator teacher position was replaced with a ISS teacher assistant position. So that's one of the changes. And so you don't have this on a document in your binder. I'm just walking you through the items that are listed on the green sheet under the local allotment formula changes. Just talking through what some of those changes were that we made here that you can see. We've talked about a little bit already, the assistant principal formula change. So schools with four hundred and fifty students that are not low perform, in low performing status no longer earn a ten and a half month assistant principal. And Wilmington Early College, High School, and C-Tech are going to share an assistant principal.
They always have the, have it there for the most part.
That's one of the reductions in C-Tech and Wex.
Yeah. Oh, we're taking that away? Completely, okay.
They're going to share?
No, they're...
You did take, oh, okay, okay, sorry, my, my...
Yeah, because they, they have always shared, okay.
Okay. And then the other item here is pre, for pre-K, those pre-K locations will no longer receive an extra ten and a half month assistant principal. These schools are going to now share one. So that they, you did have two positions there, now it's going to be one assistant principals for the pre-K. Will no longer give extra, um, positions to high schools for graduation coaches. Traditional high schools will be required to use one of their five guidance counselors that are allocated to their school already, um, to provide this service to our students.
Because our graduation coaches weren't teachers, for, for the most part, right?
Right.
They, they were like kind of across the board on lots of different certifications or non-certifications.
Yeah, we've been working our way towards this for a number of years now. So the, originally you had seven counselors and a graduation coach. We now are reducing that to just five at our traditional high schools. So no graduation coach, five counselors.
How's that going to affect students? I mean, I know the reduction money was, but how is that going to affect the students? I mean, obviously, they were needed, and now...
And, and it is a challenge, because those, a lot of those were specifically built into the ESER budget as well. Because the feeling was students are going to need more support in this area as kids come back from the pandemic and et cetera, et cetera. What you're looking at now are really levels that were pre-pandemic levels. So originally, there were five counselors at the high school. We went up, and now we're heading back to where we were before.
So is it going to create an additional workload for the counselors, I guess is what I'm asking? Is it going to be too much for them? I guess that's a question for them. But, um, I guess I, I worry, I mean, they were needed, obviously pandemic reasons, but now they're not there. And I don't know what the burden's going to be like for them.
But I, I think the burden also goes, I'm sorry, Julie, that this also is the, a part of the state funding deficit formula as well. That the state funding does not fund at the level that where we sometimes see the needs are. And that's across the board, assistant principals, counselors, all those things as well.
And, you know, just, and, and thinking back, like, we, we had an exceptional, uh, guidance counselor at, at North Opsele. But she did, she was the social worker, she was the, you know, and half the time she was the nurse too, because we had a nurse half the time. So she did, a lot of times I had to have fifteen different hats, which is not the best thing, I'm not saying, but it was, they figured out how to do it, I guess, if, if they had to.
Ms. Crable?
Can I jump back up to the assistant principal? We were talking about where we're eliminating, or we're sharing the assistant principals at pre-K. The, so on, on the big pay scale thing, at pre-Ks, we don't have principals technically. We have directors. And so are, do directors make more than APs? Or are our APs making more than our directors when the director's leading the school?
That, that is another challenge, because the state doesn't recognize pre-K as a building, per se. So they do not fund a principal at those, at those sites. So the directorship is sort of a mid-range between. It's more than an AP, it's, it's sometimes a little less than a traditional school. But that's because that's funded a hundred percent through the, that funding.
Okay. I just want to make sure that our people who are leading are making a little bit more than the people that are supporting.
Oh, certainly, yes.
Any other questions? If not, please carry on.
We also made an adjustment for elementary schools. Less than four hundred students will be sharing art and music teachers. So just sharing between the schools now. The middle schools are going to be allocated one enhancement teacher for every hundred and ninety-one students.
When you say art and music, is that art, music, and PE?
Well, they're normally going to share, so they're normally share art and music.
What we've asked is the six small schools, since those students won't see a deficit in their arts education, is everyone gets a PE teacher, because they can do that more than once a week. And then every kid will make sure they have the same amount of art and music. But our small schools will share on a schedule where one art and music will cover two of our smaller schools.
But not the PE, they're, they're, okay.
For classroom teachers, we did have some adjustments in this area to match what the state allocations are. So the changes are first in sixth grade, we're changing from one teacher for every twenty-four students to one teacher for every twenty-three students. Seventh and eighth grade, we're changing from one teacher for every twenty-two students to one teacher for every twenty-three. Ninth grade, one teacher for every twenty-five point five students, I know that's weird, that's the state formula, to one teacher per twenty-six point five students. And tenth through twelfth grade, the change was one teacher for twenty-eight, to change into one teacher for every twenty-nine students.
I got to ask the obvious question. Sixth grade is always a tough year. Why, why would the funding be, or the formula give you bigger class sizes in sixth grade and seventh and eighth?
We went and matched the state formula in those areas. It, it's going to take a smarter person than us to explain how this came up with those formulas.
Okay.
Yeah, so now we've matched, so we were a little bit better than what the state provided, now we match exactly what the state provides for funding.
So people are going to feel a little bit different. Not people, like, schools are going to have less bodies in school.
Well, we met with each school individually and each principal to do an allotment meeting and went over. We dug down, all the way down to their individual class sizes to make sure they had enough enrichments to cover and enough people to get by with.
Okay.
Not to get by with, but sufficient amount of staff to balance what their needs were.
We had an adjustment to our teacher assistant formula as well. So the student ratios changed also to match the state allotment. So kindergarten changed from two teachers for every three classes of eighteen students, because eighteen students was, um, our, our ratio we were using to fund, um, teachers. So it's changed to match the state now for two teacher assistants for every three classes of twenty-one students. First grade changed to be from, it was one teacher for every three classes of sixteen students. And now it's being changed to one teacher for every three classes of twenty-one students. Second grade changed from one teacher for every three classes of seventeen students to one teacher assistant for every three classes of twenty-one students. Third grade changed from one teacher assistant for every three classes of seventeen students to one teacher assistant for every three classes of twenty-one students. So once again, we were doing a little bit better than the state. The formula that we're putting in place going into next year matches what the state funds.
Any questions on that? They still, do they still have flexibility if they want to use, say they, in kindergarten, can they shift somebody from third grade to kindergarten?
So we'll just allot teacher assistants, and then the principal can use those positions how they see best.
Mr. McManus?
So collectively, we, the little in large one, that saves you some positions.
Right.
Well, and really what it basically does is just funds what it costs. The teacher assistant formula from the state comes in as a dollar amount. Key, code, coded at the average teacher assistant salary for the state, which is what they pay us at. Our teacher assistants make, on average, about a dollar more an hour than the average. And so it uses up that money faster than what the state actually gave us. And then you pay for that through local, any, whatever above, so if you increase the pay, it's above the state, then you capture that in the...
So Dr. Barnes, did I hear you right? We, this actually would take us back to what the state's paying, and we're not tapping into local at all for teachers' assistance. Is that what I heard you say?
I think what I mean to say is what the state puts in a fund for the teacher assistants doesn't match what they cover. Well, what they, what their ratio is, because they are only paying at the average teacher assistant salary. And ours is more, our average teacher assistant salary is more than that. So the money doesn't go as far as what they would expect.
But this proposal gets us back to...
It gets us close to zero, doesn't it?
Yeah, so the formula matches what the state funds, but because our average teacher assistant salary is higher than the state average teacher assistant salary, we will still have to fund some from local.
But it reduces it.
But it reduces the amount of local funding we use.
Ms. Walker?
Well, I imagine, I mean, I think we're doing state level, but I mean, New Hanover County is more expensive to live here. And I imagine that's why they get paid a little bit more.
Right.
But obviously not enough. Because I know when we did our salary study, the recommendation was a lot higher. But unless we find another funding source or we get, we get the higher amounts, there's no way we can pay more. And that's what they need. And I don't know what I'm trying to say about that, except just to say it. Because, I mean, if you live in, maybe Crax, Columbus, or a different county, it's maybe different. Property values are going nuts here. And, um, it's just harder to live and be supported on that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So looking at these enhancements teachers, zero to four hundred, and then four hundred plus. So numbers, if you have four hundred and fifty elementary school, it's a pretty good split. But when you're talking seven hundred, that four fifty elementary school and that seven hundred elementary school is going to get the same number of enhancement teachers? Is that, that's what's, that's what's happening? I'm, I'm just curious, I don't know if it's a better solution for our lower and our higher to share so that our, our lower population, elementary school, is still getting the same circulation of all the enhancements, but then we're providing extra support to our larger schools? And you can tell me I'm wrong, but I, I was curious.
You're, you're not wrong. It is a question of diminishing resources. I think this is our start of a, sort of a longer year plan. I think that you're right, the, the state funding formula of one per one ninety-one really gets you to three for our largest. It does keep a lot more in our smaller schools, but we figure in something where we're doing this amount of intervention and, and reduction and rightsizing, we might need to do that in, in steps.
Okay. I, I just, if we keep that maybe in our back of our mind, instead of partnering with our, all of our smaller, maybe we partner a smaller and a higher population so that we're providing quality for everyone in the district, so.
And I, I would like to add on that note about enhancement teachers. The state does not fund additional teachers for middle school enhancement.
Yeah.
They don't for high schools either. But for middle schools, we felt that that was important enough to at least give them some additional funds related to enhancement. So that will be coming from local funds. So we've adjusted down, but we still are going to be paying for some of those out of local. We will no longer provide interventionist positions to middle schools. So you don't see that on the allotment formula because it went away. So it was there last year, and it's not there this year. We also are making an adjustment to our guidance counselor allotment formula to provide, um, one per elementary school and two per middle schools. In the past, we had looked at, hadn't necessarily looked at it through this funding formula, but we did look at the needs and the, um, identified risk for the student populations when we were funding guidance counselors. And I don't know if anyone has any additional information they want to share related to how we've funded guidance counselors in the past.
Prior to ESER? So I don't have any information on how we did that prior to ESER, but we know that the, while the caseloads will be, you know, certainly not ideal, but they are workable. The other thing I wanted to mention is the more standard operating procedures we have, where we've got protocols for how you handle scheduling, how you support crisis needs, how you manage the, the role and the multitude of tasks. You know, there's, there's much more efficiency in place. And we have tools that really help with that scheduling piece and the, the student support piece. So, um, this, you know, this ratio is doable. It's, I mean, it's tight, but it is doable. And our ratios are, are much better than many school districts.
So that wraps up...
Just, just to follow up what Julie was saying. I mean, it's going to depend on the population in the year, right? Like, if, if a school is having a particularly hard time and they need extra support, how would they ask for that? Could they ask for that? Because we can't really, we can't really know. I mean, because what we're doing is just, budget is a, this is what we think is going to happen. But what, if they, you know, because we're losing so many guidance counselors, because ESER funding is gone, right?
Well, across the district, we're losing nine.
Nine?
Nine, and then nine social workers. So, um, certainly if there are needs above and beyond what the staff can, can support, that's what their district supports are for, like the supervisor for counseling services will go in and help support. And the same thing with the supervisor for social work.
And we've also worked with our Title One Director as well. If, if people want to reallocate their Title One funds to fund a second counselor at some schools. And there are a couple of targeted middle schools where we did leave them with three guidance counselors, because we were aware of the need of, in certain places.
Would the principal come to you guys, or would the staff member? Would probably go.
We, uh, we mostly did that through the allocation meetings with the principals and then had those conversations then.
I had a question about the teacher assistant ISS and the teacher ISS coordinator. So we only have ISS at element, I mean, at middle and high, right? And so, um, what is, how do you decide if you get a teacher assistant or if you put a teacher assistant there versus a teacher?
Well, we solved that. The high schools had traditionally had a classified ISS monitor.
Okay.
The middle schools had had a teacher, and we are repurposing those teachers back into classrooms and providing them a classified person instead. So the middle school will now match the high schools.
Okay. Because I used to sub in those classes also, and the, I didn't know if I was a TA or a teacher, because I think we were always just teachers. We, we got paid at that rate. But that's, so we're all, we're, everybody's going to be a teacher in ISS now.
The other way around.
All the way around.
Everyone will be classified in ISS.
Gotcha, okay. So we're taking away, the one at the bottom, we're taking away, that should be zero, because we're taking them away?
Well, we are, um, reducing the teacher ISS posit, coordinator position, but we're adding a teacher assistant ISS. So one's a negative, one's a positive. But there is a net, um...
Oh, gotcha, I see. I didn't, wasn't paying attention to the, the parentheses, my old lady eyes. Okay. Okay, thanks.
So that's it for the local allotment formula changes. Uh, if there are no questions, we can move on to the division reductions.
Move on.
Okay. So this is the bottom of the first page of the green sheet. List each division and the amount of the reduction for that division. Some, so divisions were given flexibility. Everyone had to submit a reduction of ten percent, but they were given flexibility as far as if it was a position that they wanted to, um, no longer have, or if they wanted to look at services, contracts, or equipment, things like that for their reduction. So Financial and Business Services Division, we had a reduction of around eighty-four thousand dollars based on our, um, our current budget. I do want, before we get too far into this, I, I do want to make sure that I'm clear. When we were, so we gave a number to each division, so we calculated, this is what ten percent reduction dollar amount is for your division. Whenever I was doing those calculations, I did not include salaries, benefits, local supplements, SRO contracts, nursing contracts, school allocations for classroom supplies, office supplies, professional development, high school signature program allocations for field trips or supplies, schools athletic allocations, local pre-K. for field trips or supplies, schools athletic allocations, local pre-K. I didn't include utilities for like water, natural gas, foam, didn't include insurance or charter school payment. So we backed a lot, I know that number may seem low. I think the ten percent for our divisions at central office was about, I want to say it was about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it was because a lot of these things may be in a central office budget, but it's really providing allocations and support to the schools or, or things that we have no control over, like utilities. So we backed those out before we did the ten percent reduction. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Yes?
Mr. Walker? So SRO funding, the, that comes from the county?
So some of our county funding goes towards that. We also receive a state grant that pays for some of our SROs as well. We may have a little bit of local money that we put towards SROs, but majority of it actually comes from the county allocation.
Okay, so I guess my question was, let's, let's just say, you know, school A has X number of dollars that they have for managing their SROs. And if they go over that or if there's an incident or, then it comes out of the school budget?
No, we have an SRO contract, so we're building, based on that contract, they provide X number of SROs at each school.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't know if I'm understanding. Ask the question again.
Well, I guess the, and this, this is coming from a, a person in the community that thought, and that's why I thought I would just ask, that thought that when a school needed extra SRO support for, like at a sporting event or because of an incident that had occurred, that the school had to pick up the extra costs incurred because of this special circumstance?
So not necessarily, but it could be. So we were managing the security budgets for athletics centrally, but some of our schools needed a different amount. So that's, that's historically still been managed at the district level, but unless it is in their athletic budget and already built into that, they might be using some of that, but for the most part, we've covered that and schools don't have to pay for any SRO services.
And that's, that's what I thought. So somebody's just got that intel. Okay, so that's, that's good. So whoever's listening, get the, that intel and so here we go. Thank you.
So are there any questions related? I, I thought I would just give you a minute versus me reading through each of these lines, maybe if you have any questions related to the reductions, we have senior staff here that can answer any questions that you might have.
So there's one here, family life position that we're doing away with, with one of the positions? So does that from a specific, oh, from a specific school or just in general?
We actually had someone who retired.
Okay.
So they felt they could absorb that position because we had to make some cuts.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's a person that were retired. So we took advantage of that since they were retiring.
Okay.
So they will not, the services won't change.
Okay. So teachers will just, they'll just rotate around or somebody will pick up another school?
Exactly. I think, actually our specialists is going to pick up a, a couple of classes, yes.
We're not going to have teachers on TV asking for money, are we?
Can't answer that question. Yeah, I was like, they're like.
But they can't ask for teachers.
Flirty question, I don't, I don't.
They should not be.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, our, our district is generous. And I, I know I say it and I say it open, but our, our county commissioners take care of us.
Set my position, they do.
Yes, they, they take very good care of us. And some of the things that, and I've talked with the teacher advisory, when they're asking things, you, you need to sit in on your school improvement team, because that's where the school's budget rests and that's where they did the opposite, where they're going to go and who's doing that. That's where the input, because a lot of the, the questions can be answered at their school, on their school improvement team. And because the money goes to the schools and they may say that, oh, we got X amount, but they may forget that they have two social workers. And so those are two positions where technically some districts, you'll get, you're on a cycle and social worker comes. Ours are actually, every one has one sitting there. So we're fortunate. Yeah, so there.
Ms. May.
The last section, Ms. Sutton, the federal grant ending total and then the increase request, is, are these grant requested things or, and if, and if so, when will we know whether or not we receive those grants?
So let's, let's finish the.
Okay, I'm jumping ahead.
We'll get to it. I just, I don't want to move too quick in case we have any questions related to the division reductions.
Okay.
Ms. May.
Looking at operation division maintenance, there's a two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar reduction in rentals and leases. Was that just one big thing or did you, did you take away all of Eddie's toys?
Not all.
Eddie too, they won't weigh his cell.
We're not going to cut the grass.
He did hand some.
Yeah, it's a, a ten percent reduction in, in maintenance is a, is a pretty big number. But we have looked at how we're currently operating and the maintenance organization and, and in response to that reduction are in the process of, of making some changes so that we can be more efficient with the money that we have.
I did have a question.
Walker?
Thank you. So, so you gave us this sheet initially that looked at the straight ten percent cut and then it had all the stuff that you just said.
Yes.
The finances in, in business services division, it looks like you guys, it went more than ten percent and less on my math.
Yes.
Your better math.
Yes, so some divisions did go more than ten percent. So I, speaking for financial and business services, we determined that we could make reductions as far as staffing versus looking at our contracts and different things that we, so, you know, our accounting software, things, we didn't feel like we had other places to be able to reduce, so we chose to make some reductions related to positions and because of that, you know, we're a little bit over that ten percent.
That's good.
Do you have the sum totals for each?
Department?
Main division?
Actually, I do. So financial and business services division was eighty-four thousand one twenty-nine. Human resources division was thirty thousand four hundred. Instruction and accountability division was seventy-five thousand two forty-one. Operations division was five hundred and fourteen thousand two seventy-seven.
A lot of toys.
We stayed with the ten percent.
Yeah. Outreach division nineteen thousand four ninety-two. Student support services division forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. Technology and digital learning division hundred and ninety-nine thousand eleven dollars. So we ended up with a reduction in those areas of nine hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred and two dollars and forty-seven cents.
What was that big number again? I'm sorry.
And half of it's out of operations.
Nine hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred and two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Wow.
Yeah, okay. So.
Money. Ms. Craybill?
Yeah, the, so Dawn, I'm assuming in your area network coordinator, that's through attrition, that we're just not going to fill that and it'll be absorbed? Somebody will take a different school?
Person has already left up and, or a better job, they're taking care of it.
Okay. And then what kind of contracted services are we cutting back on?
Nothing instructional that teachers are using. We are doing it more on the operational side. There's some software that we had that we didn't think we were taking full advantage of, and so we figured it was better to cut it than continue using it.
Yeah, because, just because it doesn't hit the classroom. If it hits our staff, that they need some of these services that we don't want to disadvantage them either, okay?
But we're good.
So the next section we'll top, we'll go through, Ms. Barnhart, is the federal grants ending. So this is the ending of ESER two is the majority of this. So, and we had some conversations during the budget process last year that ESER two would be going away this coming up year and then the following year ESER three would be going away, those would be ending. So here you see the reductions. So these were additional positions after the pandemic when the feds made this funding available to us, the additional positions that we put in place during that time that we felt that additional support was needed for the schools. So these are the positions that will be going away as those grants are ending. Yes, and so we're working towards this. We are being realistic. You know, I, I don't know that all of these are going to be gone the first day of school because we do want to make sure that all of our employees have the opportunity to continue working with New Hanover County schools. So we, we will, and I know Chris has met with these, a lot of these individuals, I'm not sure if you're done with all the meetings or not, but actually meeting with individuals that will be impacted by this change.
So are we to, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Ms. Bradford?
We had said earlier that we were losing nine guidance and nine social workers. Is this encompassing those eighteen ninety-nine or is in addition to?
All of the reductions are included in the green document. So we have nine in this federal section.
Okay.
So there are ten percent reductions on our local.
I'm sorry?
So did you clarify that, that the ten percent reductions that we submitted, they're for local funds, so that's why you won't see as much from student support because of our state and federal?
Ms. Craybill?
Yeah, that's what I, that was sort of getting to ask the same question on, but the, everybody that we're seeing here on this page are ones that are leaving us at the end of this calendar year, school calendar year? Or are some of these being spread out to ESER three dollars for next?
So as, as we've talked about, there are some positions that will come to an end June thirtieth and we're repurposing those people into vacancies that we have. Positions, some of these, we have to wait until people leave so principals know that there are several types of positions that have been frozen and we will get ourselves down to this number throughout the course of the year as attrition provides the opportunity.
Okay.
I will add too, if for some reason we do not have opportunities for these individuals to go into a different position or at a different school, however that might look, we would use ESER three if needed until an opportunity becomes available. So I think that maybe answers the second part of your question.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you. So I understand the need to, to trim with the funding that's ending. I guess is the need still there again? That's another question because mental health is still a problem. Actually, it's probably as bad, I think, in my opinion, on what I've read and seen. And so getting rid of eleven guidance counselors, well, and hopefully spreading them out, but I don't know. Is there a chance for maybe more federal grants? I mean, y'all, have you all heard of that or no?
I've not heard of it.
But.
I have not heard.
Ms. Ms. Madison?
Doc, what you said, which I understand, you're freezing positions once you know until we figure out where we are or where we aren't. Do you have a date where, how frozen? When, when that's going to? And the reason I say that is we all know that to get some of the best teachers, start now as people start to look.
Right.
And not, and I understand why we're doing it. I mean, I, I get it. I just want everybody to understand that because of the financial situation, when we freeze, we're going to miss some opportunities.
So what we have and what, a lot of these positions will go into vacant positions. Those, if they are certified, especially if they're certified or if they're classified, the position is there for moving individuals into it. So for instance, like over here, that's four point five.
Well, I know it's hard.
So what we do, we are looking, so yes, there is specific, if, you know, are hard to fill positions, meaning your biology's, your math ones, you know, those are hard to fill in some of those schools. We do, we'll say it's frozen, I won't use the word frozen there, but, because we have to open that up, because, you know, trying to find some of those positions.
There's just, there's just some we can't.
Right.
Push aside and wait.
Right. Well, to be clear, I didn't mean we were freezing everything. There are certain positions that we'll hire internally only, but there are very many more positions that we'll be just like normal with.
Ms. Bradford?
This is a question I've been meaning to ask, so it's reminding me that I keep meaning to ask. When you refer to occupational therapists and, you know, PT and OT, especially next door, are we talking about the same traditional? What, what's an occupational therapist under this term? For me, it, it meant something for a year and a half that I think might be different.
Ask me that again, please.
What's an, what's an occupational therapist under this federal grant money here? What do they do?
So they provide occupational therapy services, just like they would in a private medical setting, but they're educationally relevant services. So they are medically certified, trained occupational therapists that specifically work on fine motor and other sensory needs with accessing school materials. It could be seating, it could be that they work on specific fine motor skills that address handwriting, but not specifically that. Sometimes it's helping a, a child that has a physical disability with maneuvering a spoon to eat, so basically daily life skills.
It's a traditional, it's a traditional meaning of the word. That's awesome.
Yes.
So physical therapy would be the same thing?
Yes.
Physical therapy is more focused on gross motor skills. And so we have five physical therapists in the district. We have many more occupational therapists. We're around thirteen, might be fifteen, because sometimes that changes because those services are driven by individualized education plans, IEPs. And so physical therapists support our students with mobility, such as walking, operating in standards. They might work with students who don't have both legs or don't have all their limbs and really accessing their environment, but that's more gross motor. So you kind of think about small motor and big motor skills.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to kind of talk to Ms. Walker's point. I wonder, with this, you know, reduction in positions of things, I, I mean, there might be resources in which we can have MOUs in our community to, you know, and so I think, I think we have an opportunity to kind of look at the need and try to be intentionally responsive. And so I think as we move forward, it might not be in our budget, but we can figure out a way to kind of connect the needs to the community or vice versa, so that we can be creative, but.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely what we're going to talk about for sure. That's a good point, thank you.
So I'm happy to help with that, too.
Awesome. That's great.
Did we have? Okay, so we'll move on. The next section is increased requests. So we did have a couple of requests that came through that we were able to identify some funding for, so I wanted to talk through those. The first one related to our assembly software subscription, that fee is going up, so we've got an increase, you'll see there, of ten thousand nine hundred. The next item is an increase related to career technical education. There are some things that federal funds will not pay for unfortunately, that we feel like are really needed in our career technical education program. And these things are related to student supplies. So federal funds cannot be used for things such as slip resistant shoes, water, Gatorade that we feel like are important in our nursing program and.
In our fire program.
Fire program so that they, you know, can refresh themselves in the heat.
Yeah.
So that, that's the reason for the increases you see there, this amounts to about thirty-five hundred dollars. We also have an increase for operations division related to contracted services to, for student projection study. This, we are going to ask the county to see if they would reimburse us for that forty thousand dollars that we're expected, that consulting contract to be. So we're. So we're, we are hoping that that.
I think in the last meeting that you attended with the county, they requested a facility utilization study along with this. And so at the April board meeting, we have consultants that will present both of those. So that dollar amount would be seventy-five.
Okay. They're there, the ones you referred to, for discussion. We can hold it down.
And forty, like I said previously, the forty thousand, we are gonna request that reimbursement from the county. Student Support Services Division related to athletic stipends. So we did have a recommendation in your binder. There is a blue sheet that has the proposed athletic stipend schedules. We had talked previously about middle schools, but we decided to take a look at that entire athletic supplement schedule because along with middle schools, you know, we haven't had an increase in this area in quite a while. So we, we are proposing through this budget, an increase of five percent for the athletic stipends. The increase for, and I have the ones that are a little different highlighted for you there. The middle school athletic coordinator is gonna go up more than that. They're currently more than the five percent. They currently are receiving a hundred and forty dollars monthly for over a ten month period, and they would actually increase to a hundred, two hundred and eighty per month for the ten months. We are not recommending a change for the middle school cheerleading. That's new. It hasn't been on the schedule long, so we're just gonna keep them consistent. And then the others that I have listed here are gonna go up five percent. We're also including in this recommendation to add esports. So you'll see that highlighted in the high school area. And they would be starting off at the same rate as some of our other sports. Like, for example, as cross country, they would be twenty-nine hundred, the annual cost. And you can see how that compares to the other, it's in line with the other coaching stipends at high schools.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, so is there a reason why we don't pay our athletic directors since most of them are A Ps anyway, twelve months? Because there is planning that probably has to be done over the summer, you know, to, and field maintenance and, you know, schedule making and all that stuff?
I believe that two of our A Ps are twelve months, one of them is the A P A D.
Okay. Because all of our high schools, well, I guess three of our four are A Ps and one is not.
Right, and that A P is a twelve month position.
Okay. And, okay. And then is there also a reason that in some of our sports you have them listed as boys and girls together under one line? And then on other sports, you have boys and girls listed separately?
There is no reason, it's just not consistent. That's a very good point.
Well, and the reason I was asking was because if you don't list them separately, then I couldn't add them up in this column, you know, to say, is it money that we're missing that that should be added that would be, make it more? There's only two of them, the lacrosse, you know, assistant, boys and girls. And then, well, actually, there's one up there with girls and boys basketball, you know, they're listed together. So I didn't, but like, when you do it with swimming, they are together. But, and with track and cross country, they are together. But it doesn't show that the, the girls' coach gets paid, you know, really. Or the boys' coach gets, you know, somebody doesn't get paid.
So we, I'll work with Kelly Lewis and we'll clean up this document a little bit. So it, that, because I'm not sure that it aligns like what you're saying, but that makes sense. So we can clean up this document.
And then do you think there's a typo under softball head varsity at seven thirty-five? Because they're making ten, ten more dollars a month than everybody else. They're making seven thirty-five instead of seven twenty-five? Do you think that might have just been a typo? Softball head varsity, it's like almost to the bottom.
Yeah, she's right. I'll have to check with Kelly Lewis, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's a reason for that or not.
Okay, but they're the only, they're the only head coach that doesn't make the same amount. So I was thinking that was just a typo.
We'll confirm that.
Okay. And then one last question, when it's, is there a reason why our athletic coordinators at middle school are gonna make less money than the majority of their head coaches? Because they're at two eighty a month. I mean, I'm not, you know, I know that we're already, you know, paying them more, but it says that they make two hundred, the new proposal is they'll make two hundred and eighty dollars, and yet all of their head coaches are making two hundred and ninety.
Make it for ten months.
Yeah, ten versus four.
They receive it for ten months versus the others say for four.
Except the cheerleaders, they get eight because they have two seasons.
Right, right.
But our, our athletic directors also have, you know, three seasons.
They've been compensated ten months, we pay them ten months at the twenty, twenty hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we were able to up it. I was just trying to make sure that if, you guys did a lot of work on getting everybody the same, which is awesome because we were all over the place before with girls and boys and sports. And football gets more just because they're football? The, I mean, I know we don't live in Texas, but you know. Okay.
More students to manage and manage their eligibility and.
Okay.
And I gotta ask, and maybe you've already mentioned this, but why does basketball get more than all the other sports except for football?
Yeah, and I did notice that too, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that part?
Basketball's, what I'm saying is nine twenty a month, whoever else is seven twenty-five.
And they have small squads.
Yeah, we just, so we just took the current schedule and increased it by four percent. So we would, I would need to get with Kelly and let you know to see.
I don't know, and so, yes, again, it's, it's kind of a reboot of what was in existence and trying to get to, you know, greater equity. I, I think probably a massive overhaul is needed, but in the amount of time, that wasn't necessarily something that could be done.
Well, it's, it's an excellent start, you know, to, to bring in the equity to there. Because we were, been all across the board for lots of years.
Could we propose to the board to do what you're suggesting? Take a look at it? I mean, I know time was, it was a time crunch to do this. You said it would probably be a good idea to overall.
Yes, I do think so.
When would that take place, probably, when's the best time?
And I would just say now is the time to do it before the four percent increase. So go ahead and make the adjustments now. So then it's not a four percent plus whatever the other adjustments are, just make all the adjustments at one time. So I can work with Mr. Lewis and we can bring back a revised plan that we feel like better aligns to the responsibilities of the coaches. Is that?
Sounds great.
So when I bring it back in April, then it'll just look a little different. When I bring the information in April, it'll still just be for information purposes, but what I bring will come back in May when I would request for approval. And that would include the county requests as well. So we'll look at that.
Great, Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, one last question on the esports. Since we moved it from a year round to four months, the, this isn't really budget dependent, but which, which?
The fall.
Fall, okay, thank you.
Fall season.
Yeah, season, I couldn't get the word out.
Any other questions?
The only other thing in this area is I also included a twelve thousand dollar increase for the esports memberships. So that's also included there. And I believe we, we've covered everything in that section.
Is that annual?
That is annual.
Where is that actually?
It is, the second to the last is twelve thousand dollars for that membership. And so as you can see right now, we have a balanced budget with these changes.
Yeah. Can I ask what the, the trade tech project manager for lead media coordinator job is?
I didn't talk about that, thank you. So there, we have a lead media coordinator that is currently funded with S R funds. And we would like to move that into, actually, I'm gonna say trade positions. We have a vacancy in a trade tech project manager position, so we want to use the funding for that position.
Oh, trade means just not, not a trade, trade, okay. Like a swap, okay.
And, and Dawn, I'm sure can speak to this better than I can, but money wise, we're, we're not going to fill the trade tech project manager, I'm sorry, the tech project manager position and use that money so we can bring that lead media coordinator, move that funding out of S R into here.
Okay.
And so the difference is about twelve thousand six hundred dollars for, in the cost of the two positions. And so that's a little bit of an increase to our budget.
Yeah, I was confused on trade. I was thinking more of like.
And I kept saying it that.
It was like, it's a swap, it's an exchange, okay.
Ms. Barr.
Can I ask one clarifying question? So I know esports is like a new division. And so I know sometimes there's people in the grant world that like to do, like to jump on something. In the event that there, we are able to utilize outside funding, would this budget be able to be reallocated for different usage of things? Okay.
Yep, because this is.
Since it's local funding, there's no issues.
This is local money, so it's very flexible.
Okay.
Ms. McManus?
I don't want to make anybody mad. We're, we're cutting positions. We're reducing from everybody. And I guess it's a different age bracket or century maybe, but the esports that was presented to the board last time. So we're financing all of that, which is, comes to two hundred and some thousand dollars?
Yeah, the equipment piece is, was included in the capital request.
But so we're spending close to a quarter million dollars, but we're, for esports, and that's how many students will be involved in esports? Is it one high school, all four high schools?
We had a presentation.
It'll be all the high schools. It'll be all the high schools. And it, it all depends on how many kids, I mean, right now they're doing it as clubs, the two schools that are doing it. And so once they open it up and we, you know, announce the teams, the teams could get very, very big.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest and a lot of students.
Keeps up with the other districts that are doing it as well.
But a decrease from, I'm sorry, that's wrong. It did, this is four months, and I think in the presentation it had it year round. So there is a decrease in what was presented to us. I hear what you're saying, that's why I asked the question about grants per se, because I feel like this is a new territory. And I hear you and see the concern of budget cuts of different things. Looking at this, most of it is S R ending positions, and so it's like the reallocation of people back into that. But we also do have a decrease enrollment of that, so.
But we had a great presentation, well, middle school, middle school. Their athletic directors are making zero.
But we've taken care of them.
Yeah.
Totally.
Yes.
And we're gonna look at it again.
I thought you said it earlier, but I want to recharge quickly.
And there's even, the coordinator doubled.
I'm not against anything, I just want to make sure we're not leaving anybody out, that makes sense.
So, yes, they are.
People have been around for a long time, they've been around a long time.
Better?
So you said locally this balance is. So I'll repeat what I said at the finance meeting. If somebody brings a request to fund something else, then we have to find something to take away. We're back to where we.
We gotta find somewhere to get money.
Make sure we're clear on that.
All right, Ms. Sutton?
Okay, so that's it for our green sheets. We've gone through everything there. We have talked about the athletic. I think the next thing on the agenda was.
That was all.
Oh, thank you.
Where is the agenda discussion?
Yeah, we talked about the athletic stipend changes already. In your binder, I included a copy, it's on a purple, purplish sheet.
As I say, it's a purple paper.
Not for discussion unless the group would like to discuss, but this was shared at the finance committee meeting. So I thought that this was helpful, maybe. It shows for the, this year and the previous two years, any of our line items summarized at object or activity level that was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And I tried to make some notes off to the right of what is included in those line items. And as you can see, the total for the current year is twenty million dollars. So that's a majority of the twenty-five million of the current year budget, once you back out the charter school payment salaries and benefits bonuses. So I thought that might would be helpful during your review. In your binder, an additional item that was requested at the finance committee meeting was a three-year analysis or current year and the previous two-year analysis of our budget. And this is just local, but I provided that for you. I've got tabs for the current fiscal year and then twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. So you can go through and compare the two budgets. The first column on these reports is gonna be your budget column. The middle column that says memo, that's your actual expenses.
Great.
And then the last column is the difference, budget minus expenses gives you your remaining balance. So that's how the information is shown on these reports. So for your information, if you want to take some time to look through those before the meeting in April. The next item, I did have a couple of things that were submitted to me from the group, I think by Thursday or Friday. And so I don't know if we won't have some discussion around those items. We've got a few more minutes, is that okay?
Yeah, pretty good.
One of the items that I was asked to bring back was just an estimated cost of funding an additional. So remember in the information we just went over, we were funding a four percent raise. If we were to fund an additional two percent raise for our employees that make less than a hundred thousand dollars, that cost would be approximately four point six million dollars. And that cost does include benefits. So that's, it's gonna be the salary and social security, retirement would be all included in that number. And I don't have a document in the binder for you. If you would like me to bring something back, I was just asked to bring back a cost estimate if we were to decide to fund that.
Did you say two point six million?
Four point six million.
Four point six million, okay, gotcha.
And the other question related to bringing back that cost would, was who would, what types of employees would make less than the hundred thousand dollars so then would not be eligible for that additional two percent? And that's gonna be, so senior staff, principals, executive directors and directors, or the groups that would fall underneath that threshold. And I, I hope that answers all the questions that were submitted in, as far as that area.
Wouldn't, Mr. Ober.
Yes, ma'am.
The, but we have a ton more people than that not making a hundred thousand.
Oh, those are the only ones that make a hundred thousand or more.
Oh, those are the one, okay, I thought you were saying those are the ones that don't count.
Because the list was so large the other way, I just, I flipped it to say the ones that would not be eligible.
Okay, I, I missed the not part, okay, sorry.
Ms. Walker?
If you're finished, Ashley, you done?
I had a couple more things that were submitted to me, but you can.
I'll wait till the end.
Okay. The next thing that was submitted was related to the water filtration system. So I received a question about, and what the cost would be. And so we, at the schools that were already, already had those filtration systems in place, we haven't taken those out of the schools yet, and Annie can pipe in if I say anything incorrect. We have?
So, yeah, the, the reverse osmosis systems, they weren't put in all schools. They were only put in the schools that were being served by the Sweeney Water Treatment Facility. Due to, you know, Sweeney getting the water from the Cape River River, the concern with PFAS. And so this provided, and. so this provided an alternative until the utility authority completed its improvements to where they added a nano filtration system, and they're removing 99.99%. So the RO stations were taken out, schools were then given the option to pick up that cost on their own. Some elected to do that, those remained, some said, no, we're fine, take it, and so we pulled those out.
Ms. Grayville?
Yeah, and I think that has been a misnomer in the community, that it wasn't explained well to some parents who are thinking that their children are drinking bad water. They, it wasn't explained, oh, now my school has to pay for it, how come? So I think, thank you for that definite, you know, that explanation, because I think that has been more of what the beef is, is that people just didn't understand that we've made the correction, the, you don't really need it.
It was about a page-long summary to the principals, a couple of months before that was initiated.
Somehow, that didn't make it to a lot of people, they didn't want to hear it, but thank you for that explanation.
Ms. Walker?
Well, and to your point about that, I think the county probably could have done a bit, only because this was big, big news, I think everybody lost their minds of the fact that we were getting, for 40 years, and they had spent a lot of money on this, I know they want to recoup it from Ken Morris or whoever they are, and it's going to be a lot helpful, the water's a lot healthier now, and I think, I think communication is key everywhere when it comes to this situation.
Ms. McManus?
I'd just like to encourage, I think I've said this a couple times, anything that might be questionable with our public arena, example, the water situation, we ought to post on our website. I mean, we've got a great communications department, we need to post it, they tend to kind of update it periodically, which is really cool, I love to read some of those things, because then they got a lot of stuff attached to it, but the water thing is, I just think, we need to put it out there.
Well, Mr. O'Barry, and I think the other concern was the fluoride in the water, and so I don't know if that's something that across county city effort to talk about, you know, that's not necessarily budget, I think that's a conver, yeah, I think that's a conversation.
And there's, there's, I honestly, I'd have to research it, I don't know that the RO stations would take that out, but even if it did, you know, we would, you know, our water fountains are back open, we have bottle filling stations everywhere.
And that's what I was going to ask, the difference if there was one.
I think the concern there is, you know, concern with, you know, the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, and utility authorities across the nation, it seems to be a, controversy as to, you know, scientifically who's right, and there's an effort to, for, to get utility authorities to quit adding fluoride to the water.
Ms. Sutton?
I have one last thing. So in your binder, you should have a capital outlay tab, and behind that tab, there's a green sheet of paper, if, if I didn't, if I just gave you a packet, there you go. So I've shared with this group, the capital outlay committee, or capital committee met, and in your binder, you have the document that we talked about in that capital committee meeting, but I also wanted to share with you a request for $9.9 million that we would like to make to the county. And so, some of these items were included on the previous request, but there are some additional items listed here.
This year in particular, we seem to have a lot of really big-ticket items, I mean, the first two, or the first three dealing with safety, security, and the two title nines, that takes almost our entire capital budget. So looking at all of the larger ticket items, and we put that list together, and we submitted it, we want to submit that separately to the county to see if, just because of so many of these items coming up at one time, if they would be willing to do a one-time appropriation of funds for that, and if they fund it all, or if they fund a portion of it, or, you know, whatever they fund, once we know if they will, then we'll go back to our capital request, and we'll pull those items out, and we won't reprioritize, but the amount of money we get in our annual capital will just go further down the list and allow us to do many more things.
Yeah, so Eddie, would you just, for folks listening, and probably for us too, that if we were to upgrade the New Hanover High School culinary arts facility, and the other high schools will be going, wait, you know, where's my turn? So does, is this, and maybe this is a Patrice question too, so is this us kind of prioritizing that we want to have specialty schools, like we have signature programs for, you know, marine science and lyceum, that Hanover would be, if you want to really focus on culinary, then that is where you would apply for open choices? Is that kind of the direction that we're going?
That is exactly the direction we're trying to go. Trying to really make sure we do our things well in certain areas, you can't fund everything.
We can't fund, every school can't be the same.
So has some specialty areas, great way to put it.
Okay. And then, also, Eddie, would you just describe for us the benefit of having artificial turf as long-term, and how we can get a good return on investment, you know, for doing that? This, Ms. Bradford will love to hear this part.
And so, that actually, well, the artificial.
I didn't mean to catch you off guard, but.
We spend a lot of money with, we have two contracts, one for athletic fields and one for just general grounds, and, you know, we know that those two contracts, we're going to see a significant increase in it, because of the increase in labor, materials, you know, that's what we've heard back from the contractors, they've been great, we're going to fulfill our contract, but this is going to increase. So when you look at artificial turf, our athletic directors, our coaches feel it's a better playing surface, they support it, and we're figuring that we could recoup that money in about seven years. Now, artificial turf isn't without, you know, some maintenance, but it's certainly less maintenance than we're, than we're providing now, and we're actually looking, knowing there's an increase in our annual service contracts, or a decrease in our annual service contracts budget-wise, we're looking at ways to, you know, decrease those contracts, so we will not be cutting the grass as frequently, you know, we, we, I mean, we, we're going to, we're going to have to look at the service contracts, and, you know, we're going to have to decrease services accordingly, so, you know, this is, this is a way, long-term, that would, will save the district money.
And I'm going to have to throw my little plug in there, because I was principal for the day, thank you for putting me in there.
You had fun.
I had a great time, it was awesome, but that particular school can't even use its cafeteria because it's lack of space, so I would love to see another, at least that one module out back cleaned out so we could actually use it, but I don't see that here, but I would love to see that there.
Where is that?
Alderman Hall.
Oh, yes. Well, and I, and I do believe that, you know, we have, we have that covered in our capital, and depending on the funding that we may get from the county, if it enables us to go further down the list, it'll get covered.
Sorry? Ms. Walker?
I am happy to see we went below the blue line. I know, we had a couple conversations when we got to talk to some commissioners about that, because it's like, this repair is so important, and hopefully, they believe that's true as well, so I just want to say, thanks, right in that.
Mr. McManus?
I'm glad that you, we're going to the turf fields, hopefully, we'll prove that, I mean, I've been to school where there was turf fields, the drainage in those things is phenomenal, weather is a zero element, a little bit for the fans, it's, I think it's probably safer, and with the weather.
Bring home bread.
It's just, it just makes everything so much cleaner, and with our weather, one bad, you know, it tears fields all to pieces, and then you, so, it's a great idea, and Ms. Bradford's happy, so if she's happy, I think we all.
This line item, artificial turf, there's something missing here in that explanation, because it's one, we submitted it as one per, you know, one per year, and it's not you, it's me, because it's on my copy as well, because the 1.69 is for one field, so we were just wanting to do one field per year, that's, that does not include all three fields, so I have to, I have to clarify that, I'm glad you brought that up, I had not noticed.
My only question would be about the repair, how do you repair a turf if it does get damaged? Like, just like, cut it out like a carpet square and insert?
Stitch it back in. Honestly, I'm just, I don't know exactly.
I'm just trying to be educated, I'm like.
It could be stitched back in, or heat welded, or, I mean, I know that there is a method for making repairs.
We are at 2 o'clock, so thank you for getting this done in two hours. I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless we had any other pressing matters. Motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Second.
Second, my favorite. All right, we'll take a five-minute break to reset the agenda, and address what needs, and then we will start our agenda review.
I'll be glad to take them back, or you can keep on the study if you have questions.